Twenty twenty one. And this is the regular school board meeting. Would you all stand as, oh, I'll, I'll call the meeting to order. I have to take roll call. Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Derek?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower is absent, as I believe. Ms. Tiff?
Here.
And Chair is here. So five school board members are here and two are absent. All right, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together if you would rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which one man has undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Um, Jennifer, Anna, or Jim, would one of you please read the mission statement that's on the board in the room there where you're at?
Okay, I, I have it up right here. I can go ahead and do it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
The mission of the Republican Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you. All right, the agenda has been posted in the board book. Does anybody have any changes or deletions that need to be made? All right, any changes?
Motion to approve the draft for August 2021.
Motion made by Jim. Do I have a second by?
Jennifer.
Jennifer? All right, so we'll take a roll call vote, starting with, um, Mr. Derek.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So that passes five zero. Uh, next on our agenda is public comments. I believe we have one person, um, that is present. Is that correct, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
All right.
Eric Kern is here.
All right, let's have her go first, please.
Want to explain the public comment period, uh, uh, regulations or requirements, please, Madam Chair? Do you have those?
Um, I sure, I surely do, but if you have them in front of you, if you want to say them, I'd be.
Sure, thank you. Um, while we got on, it could be followed during public comment. We expect comments to be limited to three minutes per person, that a representative be selected to speak on behalf of a group of individuals attending the meeting for the same topic. School board members will listen to the public comments, but will not discuss the topic at this meeting. The superintendent and/or school board chair may provide a response outlining the steps that the school district has taken or will take to address concerns. We summary the school district's actions in response to public comment will be provided to the school board, individuals sitting in public comment, and/or public at a later date as appropriate. Uh, we expect the comments remain respectful, appropriate, and not identified by any current or former students, their families, or staff members by name. Okay?
All right.
We have this Kern here.
Hello, school board members and school administrators. I'm Dr. Kerry Kern, a family medicine physician. On behalf of myself, physician assistants Stephanie Vetti and Rachel Koenig, and concerned healthcare professionals in our community, I ask that you reinstate the universal masking mandate for this upcoming school year. We know that masking is both safe and effective at reducing spread of COVID-19. The Delta variant is two hundred and twenty-five percent more contagious than the strain that was circulating last fall. It spreads quickly through unmasked and unvaccinated individuals. This jeopardizes in-person learning for all students, and particularly our elementary children who cannot yet be vaccinated. I will be providing you with a letter, um, that includes more information. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second, uh, public comment came from Audrey Lahammer. Um, it asked Mr. Anderson to read her email. Would you be doing that, Mr. Anderson?
I sure can.
Thank you.
And again, this is from Audrey Lahammer. Uh, I was very excited when I saw the original school start time email and noticed that we would be starting and ending earlier than last year. Last year's start and end time made it very challenging to do some things that could have been solved by starting and ending the school day earlier. Practices for clubs and sports would end later after school, so we wouldn't get home until after six, uh, which didn't leave us much time to eat dinner and do homework. With practices ending later in the day, newly licensed drivers would have to drive home in the dark. This is especially problematic in the winter when the driving conditions are unsafe. Uh, and again, this is from Audrey. Uh, I would shower right after practice and then eat dinner and help with chores, which resulted in not being able to start doing homework until seven or later. I would stay focused and on task with my homework, but was up past midnight most nights trying to finish my homework before class the next day, leaving me with only six to seven hours of sleep. I was unable to do much homework in the morning since I would be busy getting ready for the day and helping my siblings as well. I had tried many different strategies for time management, and they all resulted in staying up late, doing homework, or getting up very early in the morning to do it, both resulting in very little sleep. It was very stressful to be up late working when everyone else in my family was sleeping. I also found it very challenging to find time to decompress or spend time with my family. I was left with very little free time, which resulted in me being more irritable, disorganized, and stressed. When talking to my friends and other classmates about my problems, it seemed like this was a challenge for them as well. From what I heard from some teachers about the homework load last year, it was my understanding that it was less homework than we received during the normal school year. So I'm nervous about finding enough time to do homework while getting a reasonable amount of sleep, especially now that we have seven classes each day. If the school day started and ended earlier, we would get home for practices in time to get a good start on our homework before dinner and would be able to finish it within an hour or two after. This would result in students getting more sleep and having some free time to relieve stress and rest mentally before the next school day. Our homework loads in high school are challenging and very time consuming, and I believe students should not have to sacrifice sleep and their mental health in order to achieve good grades. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Audrey Lahammer.
And just always thank you to Dr. Kern and Audrey Lahammer for sharing their public, uh, comments with us this evening. Is there anybody else that has public comments there that have registered to speak? No? All right. Well, we thank you for their, uh, the, well, I'm sure be discussing both of those items momentarily. Uh, next on our agenda is school board reports. Um, we'll start with personnel. Um, we haven't met since our last meeting, but I did want to let the board know that we've needed to change our time and dates due to conflicts. So our next meeting will be, um, Monday, the sixteenth at four forty-five. Are there any updates from operations?
Um, we'll be bringing something to the board meeting on the sixteenth in regards to, uh, uh, discussion on Jefferson School. Um, other than that, the land lease is, uh, for the solar panels is being delayed during the permit process, is take the back up to Excel. Um, the other projects, there's five different projects that, um, some projects going on, the park, uh, playground at, uh, the middle school, the wall at Sunnyside, uh, the soccer parking lot, um, help me Jennifer and Arlen with the other two, um.
Make up area unit at the high school?
Make up area unit at the high school, and, uh, there was, uh, one more. Kind of doing pretty quick. Our meeting lasted eighteen minutes, so, just so you know, we can move things along. But, uh, uh, it will have something that, uh, August sixteenth meeting in regards to, uh, how we want to proceed going forward with the Jefferson School dialogue.
Sounds good. Any updates from?
From what?
Legislative and policy?
Um, I think we pretty much will see that in the policies that we're reading again today. There was not a meeting since the last one. And there is, uh, in the board packet, a summary of our last meeting, um, was it two weeks ago or three weeks ago?
All right. Any updates from finance?
Uh, since Jackie are the only two here for the committee, uh, we went through the year-end budget, and there's still some expenses yet to be posted on the, uh, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, revenue is pretty much coming in, but Jackie has assured us that through all the funds, we'll be adding to our fund balance. Uh, we asked for a little bit, we need a little more clarification on that as the three to four hundred thousand dollars worth of bills yet to come in that will be posted on last year's budget. So, um, other than that, not a lot. We've been through the, uh, treasurers report, uh, talked a little bit about enrollment, uh, we're not sure where we're at with that, obviously. Um, but it was a nice meeting and, uh, focused on, uh, the current, the end of the year's budget, so we're going forward. And, oh, she gave us a, a synopsis and a recap as to where we're tracking, we're tracking the budget reductions that the board passed in, uh, uh, June of twenty twenty-one. As we're going forward, the two point three sixty-eight is, uh, two million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of reductions. They're tracking that to see how they flow through the year and see if we meet those, uh, board, uh, uh, directions or board, uh, criteria, board, uh, whatever you're thinking of, uh, the motion that we passed to make those reductions, so.
Thank you. Um, I'll just say negotiations, um, negotiations with the Cooks is now underway. We've met once. We've got two other meetings on the board, uh, on our schedule. And then, uh, there's a mediation session with custodians coming up, so we're, we're well underway with those two groups right now, and, uh, we'll be scheduling the other groups as soon as possible. Any other meetings, uh, that anyone would like to report on? All right, seeing nothing, we'll move to Mr. Anderson and his administrative report.
I've already covered, uh, some of the recruitment and hiring, uh, things that we've been doing over the last couple of months, especially with regard to equity. Uh, so I won't cover those now. Uh, we also have a workshop planned where we'll discuss those in more detail. Uh, really, the only thing I, I'd like to point out would be our future workshop topics. Uh, we do have recruitment and hiring and retention practices, uh, in August. Uh, we also talked about, uh, discussing streamlining of meetings and decision-making processes in August. And I neglected to let Jim and Pam know about a plan to discuss student equity again with an equity lens, uh, also in August. I think we can cover all three topics at that August workshop, but perhaps Pam, Jim, and I should just double check to make sure that's a reasonable expectation. Uh, but that's all I have.
All right, thanks. Next down our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone need to pull anything from the consent agenda or have questions? All right, seeing nothing, then I need a motion to, and a second to vote on the consent agenda as presented.
Someone?
Motion made by Anna. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. This time we'll begin with Ms. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derek?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so the consent agenda passes five zero. Uh, next topic is donations and grants.
Well, I'd like to highlight two significant donations that we received from longstanding community partners. Uh, first of all, the Red Wing Area Fund donated ten thousand dollars toward construction of the Twin Bluff Playground. Also, the Red Wing Public School Foundation, in conjunction with the Jones Family Foundation, awarded sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighteen cents, uh, for grants, uh, for the twenty twenty-one school year. A full list of those grants are included as an attachment. It's a wide variety of, of different activities, including field trips, uh, books, and a lot of other exciting things that we're just not able to do in our general fund. So again, as always, thank you to the Red Wing Area Fund, uh, the Public School Foundation, and the Jones Family Foundation for those generous gifts.
And a motion?
I'll make a motion through the three, two grants and, uh, echo what was just stated by the kind and generous donation of the Jones Family Foundation, uh, the Jones Family Foundation and the Red Wing Area Fund and Salem, of the St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation. So, very good, nice gestures.
I will second that. This is Jennifer.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Jennifer. Any other discussion? I would just like to also say thank you to both of those, um, foundations for their generous, um, donations. And, um, we'll take a roll call vote, beginning with Ms. Tiff.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derek?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that passes five zero. Thank you again so much. Um, when I look through that list, it's pretty amazing, all the different things that our kiddos get to do because of their generosity. And I know those teachers spend a lot of time writing grants and, and looking for funds to be able to offer our students, um, some out-of-the-box kinds of learning. And so thank you for their, for our staff and our teachers who spend the time looking for that as well. Really, uh, great, great asset we have in our community. All right, moving on to business items, four point one, the second reading of policy changes.
Again, yeah, a list of proposed policy changes are included in the board packet. This is just presented for second reading, and so it's, uh, more of a formality. If there are any questions from a board member or a member of the community, uh, feel free to, to send me an email, uh, and I'll respond as quickly as I can.
Does anybody have any questions right now? We have a member or two from the legislative committee that could perhaps answer any questions on any of those policies listed in our packet. And of course, when you're up at night and you can't sleep and you want to read through those and questions do come up, um, definitely reach out to your committee for, um, um, questions if you do, if any do, does come up. All right, that brings us to four point two, the learning plan for twenty-one, twenty-two. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I realize this is a, uh, an important, uh, topic for all of us. Uh, the document that's included there is a rough draft of, of learning plan, expectations for the coming school year. It includes information about, uh, potential face coverings, close contacts, and quarantining, some school information, uh, and those kinds of things. Um, it really is a rough draft. Uh, I do need to work with our building leaders and district leaders about certain sections of those documents, especially the close contacts and quarantine, uh, expectations that the COVID response team recommended to me. So some of that still needs to be ironed out. Uh, I know that the big topic at hand, I think, uh, for many of us, has to do with face covering expectations for the coming school year. Uh, you can, uh, read through the, uh, the document to see what the recommendation is, and that is students would not be required to wear face coverings, except when students are on school or contracted vehicles, as per federal requirements. Uh, students with symptoms of COVID are being sent home and have not yet left school grounds. Uh, and then also other circumstances that is, as determined by the department or, or building leader. I don't have specific examples of that offhand, but I thought it would be prudent to at least include that in case the, you know, something came up that we hadn't imagined, or we would expect someone to, to wear face covering. So that's the recommendation, um, at this time. The, um, you know, one thing I want to point out is, is Dr. Kern and others have brought up legitimate concerns about, uh, the Delta variant, uh, and its impact on students and others. Uh, and, uh, you know, and I too am, am concerned about that, and so I'm watching, uh, news coverage, information from CDC, the Minnesota Department of Health, uh, because of potential impact to our kids, especially those who are not vaccinated and who cannot be vaccinated. Um, however, at this time, our county rates are very low, extremely low, and, uh, yeah, to me, it seems like the right thing to do, uh, to recommend, but not require, uh, students and others to wear face coverings, uh, in school. So that's the recommendation, uh, at this time, as far as face coverings. Uh, we could, you know, the recommendation that was included, uh, in the packet would be to actually table this document for two weeks so that we can kind of fine tune it in conjunction with, uh, building leaders and district leaders, uh, on specific information. Uh, but another alternative would be at least to vote on face coverings, so we can kind of set that expectation, knowing that we can change it at any time. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there, um, as a possibility.
I see Arlen in the queue. Go ahead, Arlen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it'd be good if we could make a decision sooner rather than later, but I think that would be a mistake at this time. Um, first, I, I know the recommendation is to, that we table the decision till the sixteenth. I'm just going to put this out. I don't know if we had to, we could just go without any motion and take it up on the sixteenth. So I'm not opposed to the motion, but I don't think we need to take that action. I did some reflecting on where we're headed with this COVID variant, and Goodyear County seems to be in a much better spot than other places in our state with the, the Delta variant, but, um, things are changing every day with what's coming out in front of us. And rather being wishy-washy with a recommendation of mask, I'm wondering if we should just maybe let the public know we, there is a good possibility that some, if not all, of our students will have to be masked this fall and leave it at that. Future decisions will come at a future meeting. Um, the questions that come to me is if we put in a mask policy, when or how do we rescind it when we put something out there? Is it that we authorize superintendent to make that decision? Um, I think we're on track with the elementary students with a mask today, but I'm not ready to make that decision. Uh, but if you're going to have the elementary students wear masks, what kind of example does it send to the students if our staff doesn't also wear the mask in the elementary school? And, and so it, there's a lot of things considered on the whole thing. I think all we're hearing today is the masks are very important. As we progress through this thing, things will, maybe will get better, but then again, they might get worse. And I, I, I question after we're done with this, do we have a plan in place if we have to shut down our schools again this fall? Um, that's a question for future discussion here, but, uh, I just prefer to say that we are aware of the masking issue. More than likely, we will be needing to wear masks this fall, and I think we make the decision at a future meeting closer to the start of school. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Jennifer, you're next.
Uh, I just had a clarifying question, person, on the close contacts and quarantining. If we do require masking, would that potentially cut down on quarantining because students would not need to be considered a close contact?
I think, uh, by far, a more important thing would be to have kids vaccinated. So that is by far and away, uh, the best way to reduce our, our concerns about transmission at school. So typically, uh, what happens with, uh, close contacts and quarantines, and this is one of the things I need to check with Shonda and the COVID response team, is that masking helps, but it may not be enough in, in some circumstances. So, um, again, vaccinating, um, kids vaccinating is by far the most important thing. Uh, masking is another good mitigation strategy, uh, but vaccinating is more important.
Right, but we can't control vaccinations and we can, we can require masking, so.
Correct.
Okay, uh, one other question. Have we considered, um, surveying families about, um, their thoughts on this? Maybe I always hear from those that are pretty adamant on both sides. I'm just wondering if this is an issue that we could do a simple survey to families about? Um, I, I don't know if it, I mean, I'm sure there are positives and negatives to that because this is a health issue and, um, you know, maybe we need to look to guidance from health officials, CDC, et cetera, beyond our families, but just wondering if it's another way to get input from the community?
Yeah, I know that, uh, receiving input is, is critically important. Um, I think in this case, though, uh, for example, if we send an email out, you know, those who regularly read their email and respond are gonna provide their input on the email survey, whereas others who don't, won't. So I'm not sure if it really captures the overall perspectives of, of people. Plus, I, I think it's evenly split, in terms of, there, there are some who really advocate for mask wearing and others who, uh, are gonna leave the district if we require masks. I shouldn't say evenly split. There are gonna be very strong contingents in both sides, and I'm not sure if we want it to take it to a, a bolt, the quote-unquote bolt. I know that's not what you're saying. Uh, you're looking for feedback, but I really think we have all the information we need to have. Uh, it's gonna be a tough decision, but, but it's there. And if I can go back a little bit, Jennifer, to your first question, because I think it's really important about masking. Again, I am so supportive of encouraging people to get their kids vaccinated if they're able to do so. However, in, um, in the learning plan, as you can see, the, there's, um, a provision there about close contact and quarantines. So if we do the quarantining in this year based on close contacts, you can see that, um, there's a definition, uh, regarding quarantine that excludes students who are within three to six feet of an infected person if masks were worn correctly by the infected person in a close contact.
Right.
So there is a direct benefit for kids, for all kids, to be wearing masks because it will mean fewer quarantines for kids.
I guess if I could just say one more thing, since I, my name is in here, uh, I just, I agree with Arlen that, um, making a decision tonight may not be the best option, um, because we are getting more and more information daily. Goodyear County, um, Health Human Services just released that there are twenty-seven active cases currently in Goodyear County, um, and, uh, three people hospitalized. And so, uh, that is a great increase in the last couple of weeks, and, um, I think it would be good for us to see what happens in the next two weeks. The University of Minnesota just announced today that they are requiring masks. Last I heard, a couple days ago, they were not, and now today they are. So, um, I think it would be smart for us to continue to monitor this and make the decision in the next couple of weeks.
Jim, you're, you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, nobody's here to just do anything anybody said. Um, I agree with some of what both Arlen and Jennifer said. Now, we as a school board, I've been on now over two and a half years, and we, we've had to wrestle and tackle some pretty big issues and topics the two and a half plus years I've been here, and the six, seven months that our new members have, they just expect to see these things. And this is another one. Um, COVID threw us all for a loop back in March of twenty twenty when it hit. Uh, we weren't prepared. I certainly hope, if it comes about, that we have, that schools are mandated close again by the government or CDC or NDH, that we are prepared. We should be. But, and that, with that point being, um, our job is to educate students. Um, we've heard from, by emails, public comment tonight, people we know on both sides of the healthcare issue. They're both, they're both saying both sides of the mask, have masks, not have masks. I totally think people want to have masks. I have, I recommend that they wear it. If they feel comfortable, wear a mask. I have zero problem with that at all. But for us to mandate kids and people to do it, to have the covenant, uh, wear masks in school as a school district, I don't think that's our role here. I think that's more CDC, NDH, or the governor, which have all sidestepped the issue. Is the variant coming more? Yeah, it, it, yeah, it is. It's getting more. We have more publicity. Goodyear County has over forty-five thousand people in the county. We have twenty-seven cases. It's, it's high number. Uh, we don't know, but we don't know anybody have it, but it's just. We don't know whether anybody has it, but it's just, we have, we have people here that are getting infected to some degree, but much lesser than other counties around it. That could change in a week. I get that totally. Like I said, I think it should be parents to decide if they want to send their child to school with or without a mask. That's their choice. They, we don't know what they're doing this summer. We don't know what they do on weekends. We have them here for a short period of time during a week, probably 30 hours a week, 30 to 40, 32 hours a week, out of 168 hours. So what else are they doing during that time? It's not my point to point that out. Hopefully they're wearing masks or those that they want to wear masks. I have to say, I think from the emails we've been getting on both sides of the issue, like the superintendent stated, people are wanting and expecting a decision what we are going to be doing with our school district for September 7th, 2021. If we delay it, okay, I get it. We delay it, that's totally up to the board, but we're just going to be besieged by a number more emails trying to sway us. So we're just pushing it down the road. Maybe pushing it down the road will give us more information. I get that. And I think that's, either side we do, decide is not a bad decision, but I think we need to decide tonight if we want them or not. So our public, our residents, our students, our staff know where we are at with it in the next five weeks when they have five weeks to prepare before they start school here at Redland School District. So, thank you. I will sit back and listen.
All right. Everyone's pretty much weighing in except Anna and me. So Anna, I'll let you go and then me, and then we'll kind of move on from here. So go ahead, Anna.
All right. So in looking at this issue, I thought about how we had almost no, like, wouldn't have one or two cases of transmission within the school last year. So what we did last year worked. And now we have a variant that is more contagious, spread more easily. I'm inclined to go back to what we were doing in terms of the masking anyway, because we're already taking away some of the mitigation strategies of spacing kids out. We're having more kids, you know, in the spaces. I think Jim said, you know, the main thing that we're here to do is to educate kids, and I think that is done best when they are able to be physically present in the classroom. So to my mind, wearing a mask and requiring masking of everybody is a relatively easy thing to do. I know it's not fun to wear a mask. I have been in, you know, in schools, I have been in lots of situations over the last year where I was wearing a mask for like 10 hours, 12 hours at a time. I know that it's not fun, but I think in the grand scheme of life, it is a relatively simple thing to do that can reduce the spread, and it did work last year. And then that the CDC's, you know, relatively recent change, that if you have two people who are both masking appropriately, that they don't have to be considered a close contact. That to me is a big selling point to require masks because that's going to help us keep kids in school. And we are also going to incorporate that into our quarantine policy, and we're not requiring kids to quarantine because they were sitting next to another student who tested positive. I think that is like the, a big endorsement to go with the masks because it's going to keep more kids in school more of the time and still mitigate the, the spread. And I think that's going to make the biggest impact, both for the, the kids' education and then also the impact on families and having to have, you know, your kid at home for two weeks. Do you have somebody who can take care of them for those two weeks? You know, that's a real hardship for people. So, and, you know, the idea of saying it's up to the parents, on one hand, I appreciate that, but on the other hand, I think that makes it really hard for kids. Like the whole peer pressure and not wanting to be weird, you know, like, it's hard for kids when they have to be the odd one out. So if most of the kids in the class aren't wearing masks or whatever, I think it's just easier to say across the board, and then also it makes it easier for that quarantine aspect if the teacher can say, everybody was wearing masks all day, then it's simple. None of the kids have to quarantine. You know, I think that's just, I think it makes the, all of the issues simpler in the long run. I understand wearing a mask is, you know, not great for everybody, totally appreciate that, but I think in the grand scheme of all of the things that we need to do to make our school function, I think it's a pretty low hanging verge, an easy thing to do that could potentially make a big difference.
All right. I'll round it out with the discussion and move on to figuring out our next step. I've wrestled with this quite a lot about masking versus not masking. I tend to agree with Jim. I think it's a personal, you know, something that needs to be discussed in the family and where people are at. I cannot support wearing masks right now with the low numbers that we have in our county. I think it's, obviously, things will change, but having seven people in our county, we've got a pretty, is that what you said, Jennifer, seven in our whole county?
Twenty-seven.
Even 27 in our whole county of how many people that are, you know, I can't justify telling all of our students that they have to wear a mask because 27 people, and it could be 27 people in Kenyon. We don't even know. And, and I think that it's wrong to put our kids in that position of having to wear a mask for 27 people. I also think that we need to figure out today what, what our, our current stance is on masks because I think there will be some, a whole lot of kids will be leaving our district. And we need to give our, our families time to find alternative placements. I honestly think that that's, that's a piece of the puzzle here that we need to consider. So if we push this out two weeks and we come hard in two weeks and say, yep, masks, then our families are scrambling to find an alternative. If we make, make a position today saying, based on today's numbers, here's how we feel, knowing that it could change, I think that's the better, smarter stance to take as a, as a school board, knowing that things are changing. Today, those numbers, I, I can't support mask wearing at all. I don't think that makes sense at all. So much about education and communicating with people is nonverbal. And I think we've done a huge disservice to our kids by, you know, forcing masks on them. Now, I'm not saying I'm against masking. I certainly think that there's a time and a place for them, and when they're warranted, boom, I think that we need to, to look at that. But I, I cannot, with today's numbers and good conscience, feel that that's an appropriate thing to do for our kids. I think we need to be going on the least restrictive, and if we have to move more restrictive, that's what we do. But I can't, I can't start with the most restrictive. That just doesn't make sense to me. So that's where I, that's where I fall. Other discussion?
Well, lots been said.
All right. Does anyone have a motion that they'd like to make on mask wearing, or would we like to table this until the next time?
I'll make a motion that we will not, based upon information now, we will not require masks, starting in September, but recommend those that wish to wear them to wear.
Do I have a second on that? Pam will second it. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Nay.
Ms. Ostendorf?
No.
Ms. Tiff?
No.
Chair votes yes. So that fails three to two. Uh, well, so I, what I understand then is that our official stance as a school district will be that we're requiring masks starting in the school, in the school year.
No, actually, right now, our, we do not have a face coverings policy. So I think that's the, the baseline stance is that face coverings are not required at this time. However, you know, if the board wishes to require them, you know, there, there could be a vote to that, or we could table it until August 16th.
Arlen, you're in the queue.
Thank you. I don't know how to say this. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I would like to see us make a statement that the school district is considering whether the masks should be required or not, and will be making a decision in the near future as additional information becomes available or something to that effect. Personally, I think on the 16th, I, I agree, we got to make a decision soon, but a lot of stuff can come out in the next two weeks. And, and I also know in my mind, if we put a mask policy in the high school, I know how poorly it was followed, in my opinion, last year. It's probably not going to work, and we probably aren't going to need to do it there. But if this variant gets a lot worse, I want to have the ability to put a mask policy in. We also need to address then our sports. Are we going to just not? If we do have a mask policy, how does that apply in our sports? So I think we need to have that. And so I'm not opposed to wearing masks totally right now, but I'm not ready to, I personally am leaning towards not requiring a mask requirement. I would probably be pushing for a recommendation, today I would be pushing for a recommendation that elementary students and staff wear masks. But that's where I am today, but it can all change in a couple of days as more information comes out. I'm just not ready to commit. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bryant?
I respect the board's vote, wants it decided, but contrary to what, not here to argue with Arlen, but the message is loud and clear that the board doesn't want to have a board of a mask policy based on the way the vote came out tonight. And I hope we can figure out a different way on the 16th, but I'll just share that. So by defeating that, it shows everyone how, how to mask mandate my eyes.
Anna?
I would just really like to have, like, Shonda and the COVID response team be able to weigh in on this on the 16th and, you know, to look at what happens between now and then. And like Jennifer said, things have been changing, and you of them just today announced that all students will need to be wearing masks when they are in class. I don't know what they're requiring for things like their sports and stuff like that. But so, you know, as more information comes out and is available, I think I would rather make the decision on the 16th. I mean, at this point, like Mike, like I said before, I'm leaning towards masks being required, but I'm willing to listen to, you know, what their, their feedback is and what things are looking like, you know, two weeks from now as numbers maybe change. Like, there was a big jump in COVID numbers in the county, still only 27, but it was a significant increase from where it was before. So I'd like to see where it's at in a week and then get that feedback from the COVID response team. And to have a recommendation that does lay out the things that, you know, how our quarantine procedures are going to go based on mask wearing, how, you know, what we're going to require for the different activities and things like that. So I would just like to see a more fleshed out recommendation to people to vote on on the 16th.
Jennifer?
Available for questions, too.
I, I completely agree with Anna. I think that the plan that we have now is not complete. The even masking recommendation is not complete. We, we don't have all the information that we need, and so I would just say that I completely agree with what Anna said. We just need more information on the 16th.
Just to clarify and make sure that we're providing everything, and I understand the COVID response team, but specifically, what other information are you looking for?
Like a sample, you know, like a draft of what the policy was. We know what the policy was for this past school year, but what kind of policy would they recommend for this coming year? And then we have something to tweak versus just, otherwise, when we make a motion that's like talking for three minutes to, to figure out all the details, it just gets too complicated. If we can have it, you know, concise and clear in a document, we can discuss the different points of it, and then we end up with something that I think is going to be much clearer because it is getting closer to the start of school that, you know, what the information that we have, whatever vote we take on the 16th, I think needs to be really clear so people know what the expectation is going to be.
So for example, and again, I'm just asking for clarity, there's a section in the learning plan that calls, talks about close contacts and quarantines. It has five different sections. It's confusing because there are different levels of quarantine information, but is that, like, what's missing from that section to make a decision about close contacts and quarantines? And, or maybe, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you have suggestions, if you could at least email me over the next couple of days.
Yeah, I think that's better than just asking, pointing blank at a board.
Yeah, I apologize.
Through the phones or email to get that.
I would just say one thing in response to that person is the learning plan is laid out with one idea, but then under recommendations or background information, there is, you know, one option to be considered is elementary students could wear face coverings while high school students are not required. It also says that you would like more time to be able to talk to administration and the COVID response team. And I just, this indicates that we do not have all of the information yet, that more time is needed. And I think masking is too important to just make a decision tonight when we don't, we don't know. So I, I, that's where my confusion is and where I would like more information, is just based on, it's saying that you would like to talk to admin team, then I would like to know what they have to say.
Sure.
I would like to know also in the next two weeks where, what our numbers look like at that point.
They don't know.
Right.
Arlen?
Thank you. I don't want to stifle any discussion here tonight, so I'm, I'm ready to make the motion that's recommended in our board back to the table till the 16th because I think that's what the right thing to do is. But I do think that anybody that wants certain information brought back to that meeting should disclose that prior to that motion because once that motion is made, if it's seconded, there is no discussion after that tonight. So I'm just going to say I'm in favor of making that motion, but I'm going to wait and make sure everybody has a chance to speak, anything else that they got.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Any other comments? All right, then it sounds like you're ready to go, Mr. Derrick.
Thank you. I move that we table the learning plan for 2021, 2022 until the August 16th regular meeting.
Question? Goes to Anna.
Motion, Arlen, seconded by, who is that? Anna, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote then, starting with Mr. Derrick.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Chair votes no, so that passes three to two. All right, well, we'll learn, we'll have a lot more to discuss in two weeks, and hopefully we can make a decision and move on. Our families are counting on some direction here, so hopefully that will come in two weeks. Thank you. Moving on then, business. Um, moving on then, business item four point three, transportation resources. Superintendent Anderson?
During the last board meeting, uh, we discussed the possibility of adding some buses to narrow the gap between starting and ending times between elementary schools and Redmond High School. I contacted the routing company and the bus company to determine if that, uh, would narrow the difference. Uh, the routing company said that it would not significantly reduce the gap, unfortunately. And that's because we have numerous buses going out in the country and back. Uh, adding two buses, you know, might help a little bit, but it won't be enough to, uh, significantly reduce the gap. I wish it would, because it'd be worth the money, I think, but it, it, according to the routing company, that just won't happen that way. Uh, the bus company also added, uh, that there would be some changes hiring additional bus drivers uh, at this stage during the summer, largely because, well, first, already advertising for bus drivers just for the normal ebb and flow of, 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 uh, you know, having enough bus drivers in a typical year because of resignations and people moving, you know, those kinds of things. Uh, but adding additional general ed buses as well as special ed buses would be problematic for finding additional, um, drivers. Uh, so at this time, it's not recommended to add the two buses to the transportation system in order to narrow the gap. There may be some other reasons to add buses. Uh, for example, if we find out that the kids from Welch and Perry Island are on the bus too long, for example, then, uh, we may need to add a bus route, you know, to help accommodate that. You know, there are a lot of situations like that, uh, but right now I don't think adding, uh, two buses to the system would, would help us. So I don't have a recommendation, uh, to make a change, uh, compared to our current arrangements. And I wish I could say it would make a difference, because then the recommendation would be different.
Ireland, you're in the queue.
I think that was for the motion last, um, uh, on the tabling.
Okay. Does anybody have any, um, comments about transportation? Jim?
Uh, I'm in the queue. Um, I, I think in operations, this sooner than later, we'll, we'll look at. Uh, I'd like to have a discussion on the one tier versus the two tier. You think about it, there's a, there are very probably some cases where a bus stops at the same house four different times in a day. And curious how that would really, how that really works and saves. And, uh, so, uh, somebody can maybe explain that at some point. I'll, if we get everybody on a bus at the same time, then we don't have to worry about the older brothers and sisters leaving or not helping the younger ones get on, if that's a case. Uh, we heard a, a number of, of people comment, and not everybody has that, but it's just, I'd just like to know the cost of one versus two tier and how we, Anna, cannot make that work in the future.
Uh, we can certainly add that to, uh, operations committee in general perhaps in October.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, and the reason it's not September is that that's the first day of school. So they're gonna be, we want them focused on the routing, you know, getting to school on the first day. Yeah, it's hard to believe, uh, but then I would hope that we can analyze that shortly thereafter.
Ireland, I drove bus for a few years and the first day was, uh, interesting in many years, you know?
Sounds like the two potential applicants.
Oh, sorry. Look at the sign, look at the sign.
Thing on transportation, I think it's wise to bring it back to operations. I think we need to take a much closer look at our busing, our routing, our times, and see what we can do to make it a little more, uh, family friendly. We've heard that loud and clear and all.
Yes, we're having to look, think of this, look at it before, you know, March, April, uh, March, Jan, February, March. The thing was gonna be that big of a, uh, change and all that, but we'll see, we'll make it better.
Thank you. Any other comments on the transportation?
Yeah, Ireland here.
Okay.
I'm in the queue this time. We, we need to really address that one tier versus two tier. I'm totally on board with that. But there's one other step that needs to be taken, and that's to determine. I don't know if we wanna go and do a survey or how we find out what is the start time that we want people? What's the most preferred start time people want for the high school? What's the most preferred time for start for kids in the elementary school? Because we may, may or may not find that there are a lot of people that want a later start time or the high school, or maybe they want an earlier start time and just to go into a single tier if there's, and somebody wants late at one school and early at the other, and that's the way the consensus is. Maybe the two tier is the way to go. Until we determine for sure what time everybody, the majority of the people want for a school start time, that's, that should be the first step. And then how do we make the busing service accomplish that? So I would ask that we start working on a plan to get that information to go along with that discussion in October. Thank you.
I think that's a lovely idea, Ireland. I think it's important to find out where people are at because, uh, we heard loud and clear from a whole lot of people last week that our scheduling wasn't working. And so, um, I think we need to dig into that much deeper than we have. So thank you for that suggestion. Um, perhaps Jim and Carson and I can discuss that at our next agenda committee. And maybe, uh, Carson, if you could have some ideas on that, on how we could get some pe-, family feedback or, um, student feedback, I think is also important to hear from Audrey this evening about, um, how it's impacting her. So I think it's really important to get, um, some of the students, um, also involved in the survey as much as possible. All right, anything else? Moving on, four point four, our agenda item, school safety coordinator.
Yeah, this, uh, particular item was, uh, tabled during our last, uh, conversation. And so I did invite, uh, Mr. Principal Lemonich to the meeting today, uh, to talk about, uh, the request for a school safety coordinator. Again, the recommendation is to approve, uh, the hire of a school safety coordinator under non-classified group C, terms and conditions of employment, and to eliminate a student monitor position at Redmond High School. There's some other budgetary items that we can just take care of internally, but that's the official motion that's made today. Uh, George, would you mind just going over the, uh, the reasons why, uh, the course of the position is recommended?
Yeah, um, and I know this has been discussed before, so I won't go into super detail here. But really what we're looking for is, um, trying to enhance the student monitor position that we currently have and, uh, and make it, uh, something that, uh, we feel is necessary, given the, the large number of students we have in the building. But, you know, we're, we're at 1,200 students, uh, with seven 12, with six grades. Um, when you look at the number of grades we have, uh, well, the, the particular grades we have, I should say. Uh, typically seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students, uh, will, on average, and, and you could look at this across, in pretty much any school district, you'll see those are the grades where, uh, the most disciplined referrals take place. And, uh, we just feel like we just need somebody who can help us not just supervise hallways, which is basically and, and the cafeteria, which is what our student monitor was doing. Uh, we want somebody who's trained in, uh, the ability to, uh, uh, do those things, obviously, but then also, uh, work with students, uh, have, have some training in de-escalation, uh, have the ability to, um, to work with kids, uh, one to one, uh, to, uh, you know, if there's a mental health situation where, uh, they can be a first responder, so to speak, within the building. Uh, typically, that, that would be the case with this, with this individual. Um, and just really enhance the overall safety of our building, uh, with, with somebody who has a little bit more training. And so in order to do that, we felt like we had to, uh, create a position that was beyond the student monitor. Uh, and so, uh, this person, we would, we would hope would have, uh, some training. That's, that's our, that's our hope. That's what we put into the, uh, um, the job description, was to have some training in de-escalation and, uh, things like that. So they'll, they'll assist us with, uh, building wide implementation of our PBIS. Um, and, uh, uh, obviously work with our, our, uh, people who handle the discipline data and things like that, looking for trends, things like that. So this, this person would be a, uh, uh, an assist to our administrative team in helping run, uh, and keep the building safe. That's why we're calling it a safety coordinator. Also, as part of this position, um, there is a district, uh, uh, part, uh, part to it. About 10% of the, the, uh, the job will be working with other schools, uh, helping them with, uh, uh, safety coordination in their buildings as well. So. Um, but that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking for here with this position. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Perhaps, unless you have something else to share. Maybe, uh, Jackie could share how we would pay for the position?
That'd be great, yep.
All right. So we estimate, uh, based on how this position was banded, it was similar to other, um, grade ratings for positions in the non-classified group C. Uh, estimated cost would be about $16,000. Uh, Jordan and I worked together. And as reducing the student monitor position, let's say $30,000, we would code 10% for the crisis management piece, or LTFM or long-term facilities maintenance aid. That would be $6,000. And the other $24,000 would come from reducing, um, the budget for internal teacher substitutes. So teachers subbing on their prep rate.
It looks like, uh,
Okay.
Ireland, are you? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Um,
Okay.
I have a lot of concerns. Well, I've read in the board packet here, some of it is on the funding. We're gonna save some money on substitutes by not having our teachers do subbing. But to me, it almost looks like it's a juggling of the books, because we're gonna have to hire substitutes a different way, out of a different area of our budget. Um, I'm a little concerned on that. I, I think, uh, I'm trying to remember the total cost. But the other part that stood out in front of me is, um, essential duties and responsibility. Assist in smoothly efficient operation of administering of the school. Uh, that's a safety person's, I'm sure they will work, but, uh, a lot of them, supervised in hallways, that, that looks fine. De-escalate students and then, that's fine, item four. Should be CPI first, that's fine. Building connection relationship with students or family, that's great. Can work one-on-one or in small groups with students and their families on meeting their family need, on their daily needs. I'm not quite sure where that falls into safety. Um, works with activities often supporting students on academic probation. So all of a sudden now, this is a safety issue to work on academics for athletes? I, I'm, I'm maybe getting wound up in the word safety person. Um, so I, I'm having a real hard time supporting this position because it just seems like it's a hodgepodge of all these different things that, yes, we maybe have a need for, but, um, I, I'm just kind of lost going through this all. And the funding seems to me like it's a way of, of taking some money from here and there and saying we're paying the position, but the money's gotta come from somewhere for taking care of substitutes. Just because we did eliminate paying substitutes from the high school teacher, or not high school, any school teacher that takes an extra class or whatever. If, if they don't take it, somebody else has got to do it. We got to pay them. So, um, I'm, I just having a hard time supporting this when I look at it all. Thank you.
Can I answer, uh, or should I wait? Uh, go ahead. Should I? Okay. So Ireland, uh, I, I hear your concern, and I think this is where the big hangup is on the, on the sub thing. Um, first of all, so as we've done subbing, uh, in the past, uh, we've had a need for somebody to carry out the lesson for the teacher. Because, uh, in the past, we didn't have Google Classroom, we didn't have, uh, you know, that learning management system, uh, to do that. So this past year though, uh, that's how our teachers, uh, basically gave their, their lessons was through the Google Classroom. So it really isn't a need anymore to have an individual teacher, uh, in a particular classroom doing that. If we don't have, and when I'm, I'm talking about unfilled jobs here, I'm not talking about, this is, this is our cost for unfilled jobs. We already, we will have substitutes for our classroom. But this is for unfilled positions that happen during the day, you know? Specific days, we might have six teachers out, uh, there might be three that are filled, three that are unfilled. The three that are unfilled are usually filled by our own staff, uh, that are doing it on their prep, prep time. And that's at a dollar a minute, okay? And they basically go in there, they take attendance, and, uh, they sit there and watch the kids do their work on Google Classroom. They're not administering anything, they're not doing any teaching, they're just supervising the students because that's, that's, uh, that class has already been, uh, the, the lesson has been put out on Google Classroom and, and the students are working on it. So that's, that's where I see, uh, the potential savings here, is that we could, uh, we, we could utilize our permanent sub, uh, to take a number of classes that might be unfilled. That doesn't happen every day, but it happens, you know? We'll, we'll have, every once in a while, we'll have a, a day where we'll have three classrooms that aren't filled. And, uh, and so those students could then report to, for instance, the auditorium, the cafeteria, depending on the hour and, and where we, where we are in the day. Obviously, you can't have students in the cafeteria during lunch. Uh, but, uh, but that, that would be, our idea would be to put those students in that, those areas with a supervisor, a permanent sub that we've hired. And then they would, uh, uh, take attendance and supervise. And of course, we know that when you have three classes of students in an auditorium, you might need a little extra supervision here and there. So we would make sure that we would have somebody, uh, going through and help, you know, sweeping administrators. Student safety coordinator might, I mean, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of hands on debt that could help us with that. Um, but I think that's, um, that's how we look at, at, at our, at, at, at saving here. And, and it could be, we thought the money could be better spent in a position that, uh, that could enhance and support our students, uh, more directly than through paying, uh, a teacher, um, you know, a dollar a minute to sit in a classroom and, and watch the students. You know, I just, I just feel like we'd be saving money there. It's more efficient for the district, for sure. Um, but, but that's, that's kind of what the, the thought was there. So I don't know if that helps explain that, that, I, I, I totally understand this is somewhat confusing. And if you're not really, uh, you know, in the trenches every day seeing this, it's hard to understand how this could work. But that's kind of how, how I see this working for us. And, and I think it really would be a, a successful thing. A lot of schools are going to this kind of an option because they already have, and they have been using this, you know, Schoology or Google Classroom for a number of years now. They've, they've kind of gone to this kind of model for subbing, uh, as a result.
Uh, Mr. Bryant, you're in the queue.
Thank you. Um, I think with, uh, yeah, I, I think the substitute is gonna be, is an easy one just to slide some numbers around, because we don't really know what's gonna happen now with moving the school, high school back so much later. Um, because we have 35, 34, 35, um, people that work in high school are coaches. So they're not gone every day, but because of different seasons. So there's gonna be some unexpected costs there that I hope you can mitigate and monitor and handle.
Yeah.
Um, my question, I, 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 I don't really have much of a problem. I think this, this is gonna help you all find, you figure out a way to find the finances. My question is, what's their, is it a, is it a 12-month position?
No.
Is it only when schools are in session? And you talk about other, other schools, you, you talk about the school, our school district, it could be, uh, middle school, could be Sunnyside, could be Burnside, if there's some need there, not GCEV or not another neighboring school.
Right, right, right. Yep. Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is not a full, full year job. This is, uh, this is when students are in. I think we have a day on the end of the school year and a day on the front end. That we, you know, just, just to kind of get them up to speed, but yeah.
As long as he, he or she can have the support.
As long as he, he or she can have the support, an administrative team at your school, Isaac and Jay and yourself and anybody else that can step in and be the, it's going to be a...
Paul Hartman.
And Mr. Hartman, too, yeah, right, Paul, and Superintendent, who would be easier on. But it's going to be new.
Yeah.
It's going to be, I think you're going to find a greater need than you imagined initially when you came forward with this idea.
Anna, you're in the queue?
Yeah, thank you. So I am curious about why you structured the position the way that you did versus giving more training to your student monitor? Or increasing, you know, asking for an increase with the, like, the counselors or school social workers? Where I, you know, I see some overlap between kind of what this position's intent is, between that mon, the student monitor and, you know, what the, kind of the crisis management that the social workers do. So I'm wondering if you can elaborate on why you went this way, instead of, you know, just adding more training to that student monitor position, or, you know, going on the other side with the social worker?
Great question. So two things. One, I'd love to have a social worker, so if, if we're willing to do that, I'd take one. But I think it, that's more of a budgetary thing, that this was, we already had a student monitor, so this was just a little bit more of a cost to, to, to enhance this position as opposed to, you know, getting the, getting a full-fledged social worker. Now you're talking about probably $85,000 and, and a big expense. So that was, that, that's really, I think, you know, as far as that goes. And then the other thing was really, as far as structuring the, the criteria, it really, what we're looking for is somebody who might have just some, you know, I, I'm all about training our staff, so I, I agree, but it's nice to get somebody with some experience, and you don't have to go through that, a lot of training, that person's already got it, kind of thing, you know, and that, that's, so that's, that's, I think, more along those lines. But that's, that's a great question about, you know, could, could this be aided with a, another type of position, like a social worker? I agree, a social worker would help, but at this time, I, I don't know if we can afford it. That's, that's more the, and actually, what I would like to see is, if we could ever have it, is have this position plus a social worker, because social worker skills are, are a little bit more, they're, they're not supervisory, let's put it that way. They're more working with individual students and their families and things like that, so, but I, I'd love to have that.
Well, now you're speaking my language, George. I have a Ph.D., sign me up. I, I think that's actually a really brilliant idea, is to add, think about adding another social worker, and maybe this is a position that maybe morphs into that need. It sounds to me like you're trying to meet a lot of needs with one person, and I get that we need to do that as a smaller district. But maybe, when we talked about it at the Personnel Committee, Jennifer and I were very much in favor of supporting you in this position moving forward, but maybe that it's a matter of trying to figure out, and, and I've asked for this before, let's take a really good, hard look at this position over the next year, if we okay it, make sure we're watching what they're doing, where are the needs, where do they see more needs, what's not being met, what is being met, so that, you know, let's keep this on the, on the front burner, because obviously, if there are more mental health needs that are coming out of a safety position, maybe that is something that we morph this position back into a, a social work type position or a homeschool liaison, and later on, get more of a, a monitor position as just that. So anyway, I'm, I'm in favor of this, this position, but I do think, and I would like to hear more throughout the year on how it's going, where the positives are, what more are you seeing that we need, and how can we fulfill that?
Absolutely.
Anybody else? I believe there's a motion attached with this request?
I move to approve, hire a school safety coordinator under non-classified Group C and to eliminate a student monitor position at Redmond High School.
This is Jennifer, also.
Jennifer, seconds. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on that motion, starting with Anna Ostendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
No.
And chair votes aye, so that passes four to one. Thank you, George. Sounds as if you're there in person. Mess you. We'll see you soon. All right, last on our agenda is upcoming meetings and future topics, just a couple that I will highlight. The Agenda Committee usually meets on Tuesday of every week, but we had to move our meeting to next Wednesday, the 11th, instead, at 1:30 for some schedule, we had some schedule conflicts. So the Agenda Committee is meeting Wednesday. We, our next school board meeting is on the 16th, 6:00 p.m. Personnel meeting is 4:45, right before that. Anything else, and anybody would like to highlight in upcoming meetings or upcoming topics? All right, seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by, made by Anna, seconded by Jim. We'll take a roll call vote, starting this time with Ms. Tiff.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned at 7:22. Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of your week. We'll see you soon.
Thanks, Ellen.